Recording in progress.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Lewisville, Colorado City Council Meeting of Tuesday, January tenth, two thousand and twenty-three. My name is Dennis Maloney and Mayor Pro Tem will be presiding over this meeting. So we'll call meeting to order. Roll call, please. City Clerk?
Mayor Pro Tem Maloney?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Here.
Councilmember Fahy?
Here.
Councilmember Lay?
Here.
Councilmember Most?
Here.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 You're a little slow there, Caleb.
It's a lag.
Yeah, it's the lag. Okay, so we're gonna move on to public comments on items that are not on the agenda, or you can comment on items that are on the consent agenda. So I would like, I'm gonna go through the list here. The first person I have is David Baines, I believe. Is that Banner? So just introduce yourself. Tell us where you're from, and you have three minutes to let us know what you'd like to say.
Okay, thank you. Hi, City Council members. I'm David Banner. I'm a sophomore at Centaurus High School and a member of the Just Add Water team. All across America, obesity, especially childhood obesity, has been at an all-time high. If you were to walk down the drinks aisle of the grocery store, what would you observe? Would you see shelves packed with healthy drinks, maybe even just water? Not quite. Although we may try to idealize ourselves as Boulder County residents with one of the lowest adult obesity rates in the U.S., childhood obesity in our community isn't as great. Looking back at the grocery store, if we see our reality, we observe sugary, carbonated drinks taking the center stage as our beloved healthy alternatives are delegated to the unfavored top and bottom shelves. The same strategy is employed in many restaurants, especially fast food. Why would a consumer have to ask for a water cup? Why isn't a water cup just the default? And why is the choice of a sugary drink included in most kids' meals instead of water or milk? This force-feeding of sugar-packed drinks towards youth in Boulder County can only be seen as unhealthy and evil. Outside of my work in this committee and at school, I also teach elementary-age kids karate. When you think of physical activities, such as karate, you most likely associate them with water, the go-to drink for vigorous exercise. Yet, I still see kids regularly bring sugary-packed drinks to hydrate with in class. Those same kids that bring those sugary drinks also often perform at a lower degree than the kids who drink water instead. One chemical present in most sugary drinks used as a preservative is sodium benzoate. This chemical has been found to increase children's risk in ADHD and impair their memory and motor coordination. Although the FDA regulates this chemical to only zero point one percent of a product's contents, there is still enough for it to make an impact on many children. As a teacher and possible role model to these young kids, how can I encourage them to try their best, to push their limits, and to exercise all well doing so when they consume products that emphasize the opposite? This issue is also relevant to my family. My maternal great-grandmother and both of her sisters died of type-two diabetes and related complications. As we know, diabetes and sugar have a close relationship, and without the nonstop push for the consumption of sugary drinks, the aforementioned outcome of my relatives could have been prevented. Therefore, I encourage all of you to take time to consider the healthy drinks in kids' meals ordinance and how it could benefit our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, David. Next up, we have Lily Wood.
Hi, thank you for meeting with me. I'm a senior at Monarch High School and I'm a part of this committee. Living in Boulder County, the health of our community is something that we take pride in. With the mountains in our backyard and healthy eating options marketed all throughout the county, we consider ourselves to be the poster child for this lifestyle. But over the past fifty years, the American obesity rates have almost tripled, and Boulder County is not an exception to this. Children in our community have an obesity rate of over twenty-seven percent, which is over the average for Colorado. By ignoring this issue in our community, we continue to set our children up for failure. To protect the future of our children and our community, we need to take immediate action. Although fighting the rising obesity rates may seem overwhelming, we believe that we have a solution. Every day, children in our community are consuming excessive amounts of sugary drinks. Soda and juice have been the secret killers in our diets. These products pump unnecessary amounts of sugar into the digestive system, and with no fiber to process this, this turns the sugar straight into fat. I've seen the dangers of this firsthand. My peers and friends, even myself, have consistently chosen sugary drinks and energy drinks over water, and this is creating super-unhealthy lifestyle choices and damaging our body. Our committee is requesting that the city of Lewisville changes its regulations so that restaurants remove sugary drinks from children's menus. Although these products are still able to be served to children, we believe that removing the option off of menus itself will allow children to choose the healthier option: water. The strategy targets the problem at its core and prevents these choices from becoming habits. The health of our youth is at its utmost importance. Healthy habits that children learn today will be carried with them for the rest of their lives. For the health of our community and future, please consider removing sugary drinks off of children's menus.
Thank you, Lily. Next up, we have Lakshmi.
Good evening, Lewisville City Council. My name is Lakshmi, and I'm a current sophomore at Peak-to-Peak Charter School. This evening, I'm here with the rest of my Just Add Water team. On behalf of the rest of our team, I would like to thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak to you this evening. Today, I'd like to speak to you about why we need to reduce sugary drink consumption in our society. Our team has done extensive research over the last month or so to come up with a few points. The first point I'd like to talk about today is mortality. Studies have revealed that the more sugary drinks a person consumes, the earlier their death is to be predicted. There are many statistics associated with this fact. One to four sugary drinks consumed per month is associated with a one percent increase, two to six with a six percent increased risk, and so on. So scientifically, it's proven that even a difference in one sugary drink consumed over a period of time can cause life-threatening circumstances for someone in the future. The second point I'd like to make a part of this speech is weight gain. Sugar, when consumed, is broken down into glucose, and excessive amounts aren't healthy for the body. The extra glucose can build up in your blood and can cause insulin resistance as a long-term effect. Sugary drinks are especially dangerous because the sugar is in liquid form, and our brain then fails to recognize that too many calories are being consumed. This can also lead to obesity, especially at a young age, which is also one of the major causes of death and ties back to mortality. So hence the reasons sugary drinks are bad for the body. The healthy drinks in children's meals ordinance should be passed because it's a minimal effort to influence children and their future in a positive way. Children can be easily influenced into thinking that one sugary drink here and there is okay to consume and can be manipulated by the savory taste. However, they aren't aware of the harmful effects it has on their bodies. Substituting a potentially harmful drink for a healthy alternative will, over the long term, bring children more aware of what they're putting in their bodies and influence their many years to come. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Eric Lund.
Thank you very much, Honorable Counsel, Mayor. My name's Eric Lund. I'm at nine oh one Main Street here in Lewisville downtown with the Lewisville Chamber of Commerce, and it's a pleasure to be back here again. I just wanted to come up and congratulate the new incoming mayor and thank the outgoing mayor for her service and all that she's done for the city of Lewisville. Also, I wanted to invite you all to our awards dinner, which is gonna be January twenty-sixth, and that will be in the evening, of course, and we're gonna recognize some great people from the community who have really done some great, a great deal of service to the city of Lewisville. So I just wanted to invite you to that, and again, congratulations to the new incoming mayor.
Thank you very much. Is there any other public comments on items not on the agenda? All right. Thank you very much. We will move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Now, we'll move on to council informational comments on pertinent items not on the agenda. Does anyone have anything? Yes, Councilor Lay.
Yesterday afternoon, the LRC met for planning session, work plan. Very productive in two hours, managed to get through without any facilitator, I might add, council. A whole list of projects on its work plan.
Are you implying something?
I'm teasing my fellow councilmembers. Just for those of you who are wondering what that meant, we had a facilitated discussion of our council work plan session before and do it again. But actually, we did have some help because Rob Zakara did a wonderful job at helping us move through that material. So you'll hear more about that. There's a meeting tomorrow morning. We're gonna keep moving on it, and we'll continue the discussion with council on progress on that. So, thanks.
Thank you, Councilor Lay. Any other informational comments? All right. We'll move on to the next agenda item, which is the oath of office for the mayor, and that's me. I will add, after the oath, we're gonna take a fifteen-minute recess, and there's German chocolate cake out there. I know that's not a good thing, but we're gonna have water, too.
You can drink water with it, so it's okay. Every time they come, we have cake, right? Isn't that what happens?
Pretty much.
Yeah.
That's right.
It's the last time you have to eat cake.
Ready? Raise your right hand, please. Repeat after me. I, Dennis Maloney. I, Dennis Maloney, do solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America. Do solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America. The Constitution of the State of Colorado. The Constitution of the State of Colorado. The ordinances and the Home Rule Charter of the City of Lewisville, Colorado. The ordinances and Home Rule Charter of the City of Lewisville, Colorado. And faithfully perform the duties of the Office of Mayor. And faithfully perform the duties of the Office of Mayor. Upon which I am about to enter. On which I am about to enter. Congratulations, sir. Thank you very much. Let's not forget cake. I need to sign it.
Discussing a potential event that's in less than a month.
Oh, dear.
I think it could be, I think I can spin it, though.
Okay. What is it?
It's a local filmmaker.
Ooh.
That made a film about the experience in the pandemic of people who are already marginalized.
And so.
So it's local. It's voices we're not necessarily hearing. And as I told you, I'm like, if it's early February, that's almost two years to the date of when everything's shut down. So if they're okay with there being small crowds, I.
Yeah.
It'd be like.
Show off. I think it's cool.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So.
Often, when you're doing something new and different.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Just, you know?
Yeah.
Just is.
Ellie. It was delicious.
The tiniest little slice. It was perfect.
I'd have him a good luck.
I did some stress eating before this, so I was like.
Did you?
I was like, cake's not gonna happen. I was so craving sushi at lunch. Why did I not remember sushi? Oh, she had closed Monday.
Thank you, everybody. We'll bring the meeting back to order. The next item will be the city manager's report.
I'm ready.
I hope you have water in that container.
I have water.
Yeah.
I haven't had any sugar yet. Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick items. Just so council knows, snow management's been rough with the snow we had and the cold temperatures. Public Works this week is out aggressively doing what we would call slush busting or peeling pack. So peeling back that snow. So we've made a lot of progress, and you'll continue to see that out there. So I just wanted to make sure you know about that. On January thirtieth, you'll start to see a series of educational conversations at the library about mitigation exercises and activities that we're working on. So I really encourage you to share that information around. We're re-advertising board and commission positions, vacancies. We still have six. So that advertisement is going back out, I think, this week. City Clerk? Yep. And last reminder, applications for Ward Three council member are due before four P.M. this Friday. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, we'll move on to regular business. The first item is the election of Mayor Pro Tem. So we'll just, I'll just open it up if there's any motions to be made.
I have a motion. I would like to nominate Councilmember Deb Fahy to be our Mayor Pro Tem. And if I can take a moment just to talk a little bit about what Deb has done for our community. Long before she was ever on the council, she was a significant and steady advocate and presence at both our historical museum and our senior center, and a regular attendee at multiple meetings, not only the City Council Planning Commission, Rec Center, OSAB. Basically, Deb probably has attended more meetings perhaps than anybody else sitting on the dais over her time. And Deb also lost her house in the fire and has continued to serve and take, you know, take care of herself as well as serve the community, which I think is highly commendable. She's been an advocate for sustainability. She's my War Two cohort and has been very helpful in terms of, you know, just being a mentor to me and helping me come up to speed with the job. And she's also a bastion of information about, because of all her involvement and engagement over the years, of sort of historical context for a lot of things that are going on. So that has both been really helpful to me and fed my, I guess, interest in sort of understanding context and how we got to where we are. And I just think she's been a really important member of our community, of our council, and I think she'll be a fantastic Mayor Pro Tem for us. So I would definitely, again, like to nominate her for that position.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, Councilor Most. Anybody can be mayor, obviously. Councilor Lay.
Second.
Yes.
What she said and what she's going to say. Deb is, I've known Deb for a long time, and I've known her to be all the things that Councilmember Most said she is. Certainly one of the most passionate advocates for the interests of Lewisville residents. I'm delighted that she's putting her capabilities behind and her time behind this new role, which is challenging for anybody who has it. Because leading this crowd of forces of nature can be challenging on a good day. And I say that with all respect and love for my fellow council members. But it's really important, I think, for survivors of the Marshall Fire to see one of their own in this position. And I think we wanna lift that up and we bound to be mindful of keeping that moving. So, and mindful of our own commitments on council and in the city to gender equity as well. So that's my second. We really should have been waiting for the first and the second and then have a discussion. But I thank you, Mayor, for letting us say a few things about the hopefully new Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Councilor Lay. Yes, Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. I just want to say that Councilmember Fahy, to me, represents the best that Lewisville has to offer. And the contribution that she has made to our community, not just on the three years that she's been on council, but throughout her time as a Lewisville resident, is incredibly inspiring and admirable to me. I'm particularly inspired by her connection and commitment to serving our seniors. I'm particularly inspired by her connection and commitment to serving our seniors. Um, you know, I, I know that's something that she's very passionate about. Um, and it's something that is incredibly important. And I, so I really, uh, I, I have always appreciated the way that, um, uh, Councilmember Fahey approaches her, uh, role and her responsibilities. And, yeah, no one can tell Councilmember Fahey what to do. And I appreciate her independence in that regard. So, um, I really, we are fortunate that Councilmember Fahey, uh, is willing to serve. And, um, I, I feel honored to be on council as, as when she serves. So, thank you.
You know, typically you ask, are there other nominations? But, um, it, it doesn't seem like we need additional nominations. But, um, Counselor Dickinson, you have some comments, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I, I just totally disagree. I don't like Deb. Um, Deb and I served together, uh, on the H B C and we were both elected in the same, same election in 2019. And I really enjoy serving with Deb. We were just having a conversation not a couple of weeks ago around, um, the moments when we disagree on council. And, and she is a shining example of how to be, um, how to disagree without being disagreeable. Uh, Deb is a, is a wonderful colleague to, uh, to debate with and to, um, work with. And, and you can see her in every meeting being really thoughtful and considering what everyone's saying, both her colleagues and, and the residents and, um, and the applicants and staff. And she's just so inquisitive on what's going, what's going on and what's before us. And I, I really enjoy serving with her and I'm really happy to, um, support this nomination for her to be Pro Tem.
Thank you, Counselor Dickinson. I, I just want to make a few comments and then we can allow the nominee to make comments if, if she would like. You know, I, I think, I think my colleagues here on the dais have covered everything. I remember back when you were running, uh, for city council the first time. And one of the things you said, you know, I'm the, the, what was it? The coffee lady at the senior center or espresso lady? Latte lady? That's, that's what it was. And, um, yeah, just, just like some of you have noted, um, you know, Deb's been in this community a long time and she's part of the fabric of the community. She did lose her home. She knows what that feels like. She's dealing with that. So with all the experience that she has, um, that she has brought to this, I think, um, I am definitely going to vote to honor you as being the Mayor Pro Tem. Did you want to make any comments before we take a vote?
I would just like to thank all of my colleagues for their very kind remarks. I will say that I, we have lived in Louisville for over forty years. When we first moved here, the population was six thousand.
And Deb was about ten years old.
I wish, but no. Um, yeah, my kids all grew up here. I was involved with the museum, with the senior center, with, with just a lot of things. With the schools originally that my kids went to school at. And it was when, it was when, uh, my youngest children started high school that they didn't want mom volunteering in the library anymore. And at that same time, I went back to Wisconsin to visit my grandparents who had just moved into a nursing home. And I came out of the nursing home and my first major thought was there has got to be a better way for people to get old. And so I went back to school at C U, got my degree in psychology with an emphasis in geriatrics. And came back and started working first at, uh, what used to be called Wellspring. It's now Juniper Village. It's an Alzheimer's facility up by Monarch High School. Then went to the senior center. And it wasn't until I resigned from there that I started volunteering at the museum and the, uh, and, and continued at the senior center. That was when I was latte lady every Friday morning. I just, I've gotten so much from the city and my kids had just such a wonderful childhood being raised here and, and the safety and the friendliness, the community of Louisville is just remarkable. It always has been, and I hope that it always will be. And so I am willing to do what I can to maintain that feeling. So, thank you.
Thank you. I think this is time to call for a vote. All in favor? Say aye.
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 Thank you very much. It's unanimous, six zero.
Thank you all.
Congratulations. Sorry, we made you cry. All right, we're going to move on to the next order of business. Resolution number three, series twenty twenty-three. Resolution approving a planned unit development to allow construction of a thirty-one thousand, two hundred, two hundred and twenty square foot flex industrial building and a lot con consolidation plat of lots two and three, block three of C T C filing one subdivision. Does anyone have any disclosures on this item? Seeing none, we will move on. Do we have a, we have a staff report all ready to go?
All right. Good evening, Mayor and members of council. The item before you is a P U D and plat for the properties at five seventy-eight and six thirty-two South Pierce Avenue, which has been, and the project has been nicknamed aperture by the applicants. And this item has been properly noticed per the municipal code requirements. The properties that are in question are located on the east side of South Pierce Avenue in C T C. And the property at seven five eight South Pierce is on the north and six thirty-two South Pierce is on the south. The cumulative area of these two sites is two point five three acres. It is currently a vacant parcel and is owned industrial. There was an original plat for the C T C first filing in nineteen seventy-nine and a P U D and S R U was approved in twenty twenty, but has since not been developed. The site currently consists of two lots, as mentioned previously, and the applicants wish to use this plat to consolidate lots two and three of the C T C first filing into one lot. There is a new fifteen foot wide maintenance and access easement proposed, which grants access to the existing drainage easement on the east side of the property. The planned unit development proposes a thirty-one thousand, two hundred and twenty-two square foot, two-story flex industrial building. The end units on the north and south will contain a second story west-facing balcony. The building is roughly centered on the lot with parking areas distributed around the site. Ninety-nine parking spaces and ten bicycle parking spaces are proposed, which meets the minimum ratio for flex buildings per the I D D S G. A loading dock truck access area and trash enclosure located at the rear of the building. On the front of the building, there is a proposed pedestrian amenity, which contains an area for a future sculpture in the center. A storm art detention pond is also located on the northeast side of the site. Or in the northwest corner, excuse me. The top image on this slide shows an architectural rendering of the building as viewed from South Pierce Avenue. The building has a higher level of design than other materials seen in the C T C, where commonly we do see more basic forms like tilt-up concrete. The front of this building has large amounts of glazing with metal panels. The side and rear elevations contain glazing primarily on the second story and stucco is more predominant on the side and rear elevations as shown on the lower image on this slide. The colors in the building, of the building materials are mostly neutral shades with wood accents in the balcony cantilever. And we do have a materials board from the applicant that is available if you do wish to see details of those materials. And one thing to note is the applicants are proposing waivers to the I D D S G in this application. The first waiver is for the number of perimeter landscape trees. The second waiver is for two requirements in the same section, which include the width of the building perimeter planting area and the number of trees that's, that's required in this planting area. The municipal code allows these requirements to be waived or modified as warranted by the design and amenities in the development plan. Practical difficulties on the site, such as easements, make it more difficult for applicants to meet the landscape requirements. And the applicants are enhancing other areas of the site by providing additional high-quality materials and drought tolerant, low-water species that help both screen and create ornamentation around the site. In staff's review, the intent of landscaping criteria for development plans was therefore found to be met with the requested waivers. Staff analysis finds that the application is compliant with the final plat criteria as well as the P U D criteria in the municipal code. It is also found to be compatible with the I D D S G with the requested waivers mentioned on the previous slide. The project is also compliant with the C T C special district framework in the comprehensive plan. Based on this information, staff are recommending approval of resolution three, series twenty twenty-three, which approves a planned unit development and final plat for lots two and three, block three of the C T C filing one. That concludes staff presentation and I am happy to answer questions.
Any questions for clarification? Counselor Most?
I, I have a question about the, um, excuse me, about the, um, waivers for trees. We seem to be getting a lot of waivers for trees lately. And I'm just wondering if it, if, um, if this is a broader issue, like I, that we need to look at? Like if, if we're having, like, clearly they were having difficulty meeting the requirements because of various obstacles. And so I'm just wondering if your sense is that, um, this is a more general question that we need to look at sort of how we're applying these tree standards? I don't know if the director wants to answer that.
You know, I, I would say that, you know, the city has considered revising the I D D S G in general and that might be a good idea at some point soon. You know, they're a couple of decades old, so we could probably improve the requirements. I think we see a lot of waivers, especially in the tech center. You know, especially around the building. You know, we have landscape requirements that would require a lot of irrigation. And that's, you know, we found that that, most building owners don't want to do that because that could really affect the foundation. So it's really common that we have a request for waivers from trees immediately around the building. And that's similar in this case. They, they've put a lot of shrub, shrubbery in around the building, which is much more low water intensity and won't affect the foundation. And then, um, usually when we work with applicants, when you look at the perimeter found, or the perimeter landscaping, we usually try to find other locations for the trees. And in this case, you know, on certain sides, they have less trees than are required because of easement conflicts, but they're adding a lot more trees on other areas. So it's not necessarily a one-to-one, but where they can enhance landscaping, we're having them do that.
So it sounds like something that maybe we can look at going forward about, because, yeah, it doesn't make sense to plant trees and irrigate and then have foundation issues. That's right. Right. So, good. Okay. I appreciate that explanation. Thank you.
Uh, Counselor Lay?
I just wondered if you could circulate the material board, please?
Okay, while we're doing that, I guess the question is, does the applicant have a presentation tonight? Right now would be great.
Thank you, Ellie. Good evening, city council members. Congrats, Mayor and Mayor Pro Tem. And I want to thank, uh, just, uh, the formalities, uh, really everyone that contributes to making this environment, this community a better place to live. I know you guys put a lot of time into it. Uh, my name is Vahe Christianian. I live at nine one eight White Hawk Ranch Drive in Boulder. Uh, Boulder has been home for, uh, me and my family since, uh, nineteen eighty. Uh, so this is really an extension of, of really everything that we do. My family owns a retail, uh, business called Mike's Camera. And, uh, I've been involved in it for many, many years and then, uh, eventually left in two thousand, had a software company that was very high-end imaging related. And now, um, uh, started, uh, this business called Recycled Photo and Materials. Uh, we currently have a space exactly south of this lot. Uh, we have about twenty-two hundred square feet. And the intent of, uh, this expansion is essentially to take this business to what we feel is the potential of what it can be. Uh, we intend to hire more people, obviously, and expand to, uh, hopefully a, a much broader, uh, international presence. What Recycled Photo does is, uh, we basically focus on a hundred and twenty years of photographic equipment, uh, in Colorado and frankly around, around the nation. And, uh, we find a new home for it, uh, whether it's, uh, recycling it or upgrading it or upcycling it or taking it down to materials and parts, but mostly avoiding the landfill. And, uh, we've grown over the last, uh, six years to be really the largest buyer and seller of used photographic equipment. And we've completely outgrown our current space. So what we intend to do with this facility and, um, if I'm, Ellie, do I have access to those slides?
Yeah. I have the rendering for you guys.
So, um, the, as, as Ellie mentioned, we, we, sorry. We, we really didn't want to do another tilt-up. Uh, this particular property happens to be kind of at the, uh, older section of town. So there's a lot of tilt-up and a lot of what we consider rather basic architecture. So we wanted to bring a new kind of life that also exemplified our industry. So we're using a lot of green materials, a lot of natural materials. And originally we intend to occupy one of the quote-unquote apertures, forgive the subtlety there. But, uh, uh, and hopefully expand as we go. And until then, we would, we will be building a, a flex building that we hope will attract the right tenant to, uh, to expand our community. But, um, the, the, the materials, as you see, and the design, as you see, is, is really intended to kind of bring essentially a kind of a, a more high-tech, uh, cooler, nicer kind of look and feel than, than just doing a tilt-up. But hopefully this, these images will give you a, a look and feel of what we, what we want to do. Uh, a big part of our challenge has been, um, as discussed, the, the waiver and the subtle waiver, we're asking for basically a six-tree waiver in this, in this property. As a point of reference, the current property that we're on, which is exactly south, is, uh, about sixty percent of this lot and it only has five trees. Now granted, it's a, it's an older project, but it's been there a while. So we anticipate having, um, a total of, uh, I believe sixty-two trees. Sixty-nine, sorry, sixty-nine trees. And I think code requires seventy-five. So, uh, and the, the issue has been that, uh, a few years back, an easement was approved with the adjacent property to the north, which you can kind of see on the, on the left side of, of the screen. That basically prohibits us from planting trees on that side. Now fortunately, it doesn't really show from the frontage of, of the, of the drive-through. But, uh, but we've managed to put a lot of other trees. And, uh, I think by code, we're about ten to eleven percent, uh, over requirement on the overall landscaping, uh, requirement. So, um, that's really essentially the, the, the presentation. We, we look forward to moving in. I'm hoping we could, uh, do so by the end of the year. And, uh, I'm here if you have any questions.
Okay. Any clarifying questions here or should we save it for discussion? All right. Thank you very much. We, we may be calling you back for questions. Thank you. So let's, let's go to public comments. Please raise your hand. And Joshua Cooperman, who I thought was actually here, but now is on Zoom.
Hi, this is Josh Cooperman. I live at two sixteen Griffith Street. Uh, I was there briefly, uh, but I had to get home. Anyway, uh, at the planning commission hearing on this development application, uh, I made a few comments regarding the requested waiver to reduce the extent of landscape beds directly adjacent to the proposed building. Uh, as with last week's development application for the C T C, I am concerned with using the city's existing design codes as a means to conserve land. After the discussion at the planning commission hearing, I am satisfied that the applicant has adequately compensated for the waiver with additional landscaping elsewhere on site. In fact, I appreciate the applicant's efforts to compensate. I also appreciate that the proposed building will exceed in performance the city's building codes at the time of application and will exhibit much enhanced architecture compared to most of the existing C T C buildings. Furthermore, I appreciate that the C T C is home to several businesses directly involved with recycling and upcycling, such as the applicant's own business. I hope that the presence of these businesses at the C T C reflects upon our community's values. Uh, I would like to use my remaining time to expand upon my perspective on land conservation at a development like the T, C T C. As I said last week, uh, when the C T C was, uh, plotted out, the buildings were, or the, the lots were made very separated, uh, instead of clustering the buildings together. If the buildings had been clustered, we could have conserved a large amount of contiguous land, but that didn't happen. Uh, so if we'd like to conserve land at the C T C, basically we have to conserve the land around the buildings. the buildings. And I think it's important to conserve as much land as possible, basically because things like insects and other animals and other life forms need land to survive. So basically, my, the vision that I kind of have for a development like the CTC is that all of the land around the buildings, much of which is now planted with useless turf, could be repurposed and replanted with native plants and more trees to provide wildlife habitat. You know, it might not be the best wildlife habitat, but it would still produce a lot of wildlife habitat because there's a lot of useless turf over there. And the trees would help to cool that portion of the city quite a bit. That's all I'd like to say, thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments, anybody in the room? Okay, I see, I see no hands raised from the public, so we will move on to council questions and comments. Counselor, or, excuse me, Mayor Protem Fahey.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'll get used to that.
I will too, I hope. I just want to also iterate what Josh Cooperman just said, that you've gone above and beyond, I think, with your proposal to increase the native types of plantings that use less water, but still are plantings. I think it's, it's important for the environment. It's going to help the whole situation, and I like the, the green focus of your building, your purpose. And I, I'll just greatly say that I couldn't even tell you how many times I've been to Mike's Camera since, since we moved here. It's a wonderful business, and I'm really happy to have you in Louisville.
Other comments, questions? Counselor Most?
I'm so happy to vote on something that has the Joshua Cooperman seal of approval, because I know if, if it has it, then I'm like totally okay. I think, I actually think it's a beautiful building. I think the materials are really cool. I think it's, you know, yeah, I think it's great. Again, as Mayor Protem said, that it's wonderful to have this kind of local business by local long-term residents and to have something that's based on sustainability. It's terrific. This is, you know, really the kind of business we want to see more of in our community, and I really appreciate the applicant's efforts to address some of the issues that were raised at the planning commission and go above and beyond. It's really important, and, yeah, I'm looking forward to seeing this one go up.
Thank you. Anybody? Counsel Brown?
Can I ask just a quick question? It looks like the, the easement that you mentioned, can you explain the easement again and how that works?
Can you clarify if, are you referring to the easement on the east side of the property?
Yeah, the one that, there's something on the back of the property that, that requires access, is that, is that what you were referring to?
Yeah, so there's a, it used to be a railroad and drainage easement, but the railroad part's since been vacated, so it's used mainly, mainly our public works department did want to have some sort of easement through this plat to be able to access that.
Got it, okay, so it's an easement actually for our public works department? And we're, and our public works department is okay with the way that this has been? Okay, that's great. I, I want to concur with my colleagues in terms of the, the nature of this application. I find that it, it meets the requirements, and I also find that the, that the waiver requirements are met in, in large part because, you know, we talk about that, that language in our code that, about granting waivers when buffers and open space needs of the community are met. And in this particular case, because the applicant has gone above and beyond to sort of offset the, the necessary, where they aren't able to meet the code in other areas, I find that it, that it meets the requirements for a waiver, so I'm, I'm happy to support. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Dickinson?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'll just mostly concur and try to keep it brief, but, yeah, I think this is, this is a great example of sort of, you know, a feather in the cap of Louisville. This looks to be just a magnificent building, and, and again, above and beyond is a, is a good phrase, and in so many ways, in the sustainability and the architecture and, and all of that. And, and I appreciate staff's work on, on getting this to the finished line, and, and happy that, you know, we're, we're talking about a six-three variance when it's all said and done, and some, you know, location changes and things like that. But, you know, no, no major, no major issues here, and I, and I think it's a fantastic project, and, and having grown up in Boulder, I'm also a big fan of Mike's Camera and of what they're going to do in the building, but of course, that's not, neither here nor there for this hearing, but, but I think the building itself is fantastic, so I'm excited to approve it.
Thank you, Counsel Dickinson. Counselor Lay?
Yeah, I, thank you for the work on staff's part, and thank you for the presentation, and rather direct and simple, which is good, good for us at times here. I likewise support the, the conclusions that the final plat meets the requirements under the ordinance. And I noted that, that it sounds like the plat, the plat's allowing for merging two smaller industrial lots to develop the, the larger flex industrial building is going to make it more flexible for the businesses that get here, and the more we can encourage that in the flexibility of the work, the buildings that we have, I think, the better. That was one thing I wanted to point, point out. On planned unit development requirements, all of those, I think, are met except those that require waivers, and I likewise believe that the waiver requirements are met. I, there's an awful lot of dense trees and shrubs in the, in the front. I'm not making any criticism of that. I think I, I appreciate the applicant's efforts to, to try to compensate as much for kind of the vagaries of this particular lot. And, you know, for the way I've thought about this when I was on planning commission some years ago, and, and, you know, there's always, there's usually trade-offs. It doesn't usually happen that council is just, or, or that applicants just come in and say, "We just don't want this, and we don't want that," and, you know, and try to negotiate away the code. It's, there's, has to be good reasons, and those are specified in the ordinances. And here, I appreciate that in many ways, the landscaping is going to cool off other parts of the, of the property in, in a way that's going to be very beneficial. So I like the kind of business that it is, but that's not the focus of the rules that we have to apply. I do appreciate that it is the kind of business, nonetheless, and it's, it's good to see you here. It's bonus, that is, that is right, and we appreciate that. So I'm going to be voting in favor of this.
Thank you, Counsel Lay. I'm just going to make a few comments. First comment I'd like to make is, I really appreciate staff report. You know, one of the things that, and, and I think this is continuing to get better and better and better, because just the example of the landscaping, you know, these are, I don't know, Rob probably knows, but those, those codes were probably from the 90s, when we had a different climate situation, we had a different expectation. And I appreciate the fact that the planning department is working with the applicant to try to meet the intention of the municipal code. And that's what's important to me, because, you know, whether it's 69 trees or 75 trees, I don't know if I will notice, but what you're really trying to do is break up the, you know, the, the parcels. So I'm just using that as one example. You know, last week when we talked about the facade on that building and how concrete is different today than it was in 1992, for example, it's one of the things we learn up here. So, you know, I, I just want to encourage those kind of things in those reports because it is different in 2023 than when the code was, was written. The other thing I'd like to comment on, and Counsel Lay touched on this, but bringing these two parcels together with a bigger flex space is, I absolutely, in my opinion, excellent use of, of that land and this kind of design. You know, it allows the applicant to move in part, rent part, but maybe over time grow to the whole thing, and I hope you do, by the way. So I, I'm very excited about this, and, yeah, with Josh Cooperman's stamp of approval, you know, I think that's good too, but I think all the environmental things, I, I think we have, you know, it's really exciting, all the things going on here in Louisville with these kind of designs, and, you know, certainly it's coming from the applicants, but I give the planning department a lot of credit for that and moving things in that direction. Would anybody like to make a motion?
Before that, can I make a quick comment?
You can make a comment, yes.
I can do it after the motion, if you like. I went, and, small story, when I was a young lawyer. When I was a younger lawyer, I worked for a guy who did some products liability, and he defended car companies that had, had, you know, automobiles and so forth that had been in, in accidents. And I always thought it was, the question that I asked him when I was buying my first car, was what he drove, which, truth be told, wasn't the same as the company that he represented. Here, the person who's developing this property is moving into their own building and going to occupy part of it, and that isn't always the case, and I appreciate that. That's worth emphasizing, because it means, you know, ultimately, it's neither here nor there, perhaps on the, on the, the requirements, but I think it does lend some heft to the fact that you believe in your own project. Thanks.
Thank you, Counsel Lay. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I would like to first add to my compliments to the staff, that report that we got tonight and the cooperation from the builder, from the applicant, made our decision much easier than some past decisions have been. And so with that, I would move that we approve Resolution Number Three, Series 2023, a resolution approving a planned use development to allow construction of a 31,220-square-foot industrial building and a lot consolidation plat of lots two and three, block three of the CTC filing one subdivision.
I'll second.
Thank you for the second. Okay, we're going to close the public hearing. We have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Lay?
Yes.
Councilmember Most?
Yes.
Mayor Maloney?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Fahey?
Yes.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Yes.
Thank you. So that's a unanimous six-zero vote. Thank you very much. We'll move on to Item C, Discussion, Direction, Action, Proposed Marshall Fire Sculpture,
All right, good evening, council, mayor, Mayor Protem. We are bringing to you the proposed Marshall Fire Sculpture titled Resilience. We wanted to go through the public art process quickly to start. This is the process that the Louisville Cultural Council, or LCC, followed in reaching this point with the sculpture. It started with a call for entry. This project was open to sculpture, sculpture submissions from individuals and teams of artists, of which we received 16 entries. The Louisville Cultural Council and the Public Art Subcommittee chose to review these, these entries by jury. The jury was chosen of, consisting of Louisville residents, and these, this jury selected the sculpture titled Community Resilience. Upon choosing this sculpture, the piece went into the public comment period, where a rendering of the sculpture and its description were posted for the required public comment period. By the end of this period, no comments had been received. Following that, the Louisville Cultural Council members met and voted to recommend that the city of Louisville acquires the sculpture. Per city code, all decisions by the cultural council as to acquiring and placing works of art shall be considered final unless the city council, within 45 days of the LCC decision, chooses to review the decision at a subsequent city council meeting, which is where we are tonight. Here we have a rendering of the proposed sculpture. It consists of ceramic tiles that are painted, and on the top, you have a metal bird's nest and birds. The location was included in the call for entry. It was listed as the historic downtown area. You can see in this, in this photo here, that the proposed location is in front of City Hall. Included in tonight's packet, we do have a memo from members of the cultural council's public art subcommittee. This text is an excerpt from that memo, and on the top, we do have another quote from a member of that subcommittee just expressing their feelings on this, and we have an aerial view here showing where the sculpture would go.
Okay, well, we have some public comments. We will start off with Keely Taylor.
Good evening. My name is Keely. I live at 1412 Adams Place in Louisville, and I'm a member of the Louisville Cultural Council and was also a member of the Public Art Subcommittee. So choosing this sculpture and the location, as Erica pointed out, was a very long and thoughtful process that included many residents of Louisville. This sculpture is for our community as a whole. Our community has suffered a collective trauma, and art is a way of healing. It is a way to come together. It is a way to make visible this suffering and also this resilience. By placing the sculpture on Main Street, our community as a whole will have an opportunity to engage with this art. And I'll read from a, part of a letter that was included in your packet. "The sculpture that was chosen involves all the fire survivors through their participation during the creation process. Placing it on Main Street is a way of honoring their experiences in the public collective sphere. It is a way to say, 'We see you, you matter.'" "The public are not just passive viewers in this particular art piece, they are an integral part of the success of this piece commemorating the Marshall Fire. And placing it on Main Street will allow for the greatest number of people to see and engage with it, since Main Street is one of the highest-traffic areas of the city. It assures that this noticeable, this notable event of Louisville's history remains in the foreground well into our future. We considered factors such as available parking, accessibility to the sculpture, typical traffic patterns, visibility, and opportunities for kids and families to interact with it. Public art is an occasion for the community, and the public engagement element of this particular sculpture, sculpture aims to foster a connection among us as residents. The Public Art Subcommittee feels that the placement of this sculpture on Main Street will create the most exposure and engagement and invitation to connect with Louisville's history."
Thank you. Next up, we have Mark Cascart.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protam, Council, Staff, and City Manager. I'm now, it's Mark Kathcart, I'm 1763 Sweet Clover Lane. I'm now in my sixth year as a member of the Louisville Cultural Council. My remarks tonight are based on my role in the Council in 2022 and that of a Louisville resident. I do not claim to represent the Cultural Council tonight. I find myself before you, again, trying to outline a lot of detail so that you may make an informed decision. And with just three minutes to do it in, I have no chance. So I have submitted tonight a list of bullet points, which I've asked to be accepted into the record for this meeting, which outline some of the issues that you might be interested in, in how this project proceeded. You may have also noticed that in the last three years, the Cultural Council has had a number of resignations before the end of their term and others who simply didn't care to reapply. This includes the prior chair, Leah Franks, who resigned a year early. In my six years on the Cultural Council, this is the first public art installation that's been pulled from the consent agenda. So I think those two things alone might suggest that there's something amiss with the Cultural Council, much less the undignified scramble to try and get additional funding at the end of 2022. I'd like to express my gratitude this evening to the artists Arabella Tattershaw and Rita Valli. This project was their idea. They came to the Cultural Council and submitted as an art grant in January 2022. They have persevered through a series of less than optimal meetings and emails and decisions to finally get this proposal accepted. As I say, I'm likely to run out of time. There's a few key points that I'd like to make. One is that, at least it's my current understanding, that all five members of last year's Cultural Council intake still have not been through open government training, which means that when we meet this month, there will only be two of us that have, myself included. And so that explains, I think, a lot of the decisions and the breakdown in process. There's just so many things wrong with this. At one point, I was accused of being frustrated and angry by simply demanding to know where the minutes were for the original meeting where this was described, where the decision was taken to put it downtown, because nothing to that point had suggested it. Also, in the call for participation, there was no way to actually find out where the art would be installed.
Thank you for your comments. We'll bring you back to Council now. Council questions, comments? Councilor Lay?
Thank you. And thank you to Ms. Schmidt for the presentation. I did have and and for the the memos and thanks for the the discussion of the piece itself. It's always nice to hear from the commission. That doesn't happen every day. So thanks for for doing that. I had a question, a couple of questions. One is, I'm interested in the public process on this and and what the shape of it looked like. As you know, I guess this is where I come, you know, where I come from. I suspect that there there are many different people with many different kinds of views about public art and bring a lot of that to the table, no matter what the subject is or where it goes or whatever. And this is such a signal event in the history of the city, perhaps the most important event since since the founding, or one of the most important events, certainly the most, one of the most traumatic events in the last hundred years. And I'm just interested in how that process came together, how many people participated, you know, what, if you will, were any of the dissenting views or concerns or whatever, things like that. I understand how this is coming to us. I'm just interested, and I think the public always wants us to understand, you know, understand how these pieces of public art come together as a process, and that would be helpful.
Yes, okay. Thank you. Those are great questions. This piece came to be through following the public art process that we have on record. The Public Art Subcommittee made the decision to put a call for entry out, which is the arts world term for an RFP to the rest of us. This call for artists was put online onto the major source where any public artist would be looking for potential opportunities. We had, as as reported, we had 16 entries, and they, these were judged by a jury that was made up of Louisville residents, which included three residents who lost their homes in the fire, folks who were first responders, business owners. Our Public Art Subcommittee worked hard to try to bring many voices, whether they're artists or jury members, into this conversation.
How many people? Do you have a metric?
I believe 12, 14.
14 people participated?
14 people were on the jury.
On the jury?
Yeah.
Okay.
Councilor Most?
Yeah, I also, I appreciate Councilmember Lay's comments. I also have to say that I I heard some disturbing things about the process and how it happened. And in relation to Mark Kathcart's comments, that there were some issues perhaps that arose out of a lack of familiarity with the open government training. And so I'm just wondering how this 14-person jury was determined. Who who selected those people? How were they selected?
The jury was invited by members of the Public Art Subcommittee. They also opened this so that members of the Louisville Cultural Council could also serve on that jury if they so desired. There was, the Public Art Subcommittee was working hard to try to find a jury that was widely representative of the community. So again, including including first responders, including individuals who lost their homes, including people who own small family businesses in Louisville. They were they were trying to extend the invitation, bringing, you know, opening, opening the table to individuals who wanted to serve.
So was the cultural, so were these people voted on by the Cultural Council? How, how, what was the process? I mean, I'm just trying to understand, because quite honestly, and again, I'm not trying to disparage anybody or make any negative comments, and as Councilmember Lay said, this is a really important, important thing for our community, right? I think this is really critical and that we support having art that commemorates this issue. But again, I'm just, I'm just trying to understand that process and, you know, if our guidelines for open government were followed, if our any ethical conflicts of interest potentially were considered. And again, I, you know, I've had individuals reaching out to me with concerns, nothing that's been substantiated in any particular way, but I think it's important to give you the opportunity to fully explain everything so everybody is clear about what actually happened.
Any, any individual who potentially had a conflict of interest, whether that was for the sculpture or against the project, they were asked to disclose it, and we did, you know, have individuals disclose this. So there was open conversation about that.
So I just want to make a point of clarification. I believe the matter before us is approval of the sculpture and the location. If we have concerns about process or training or so forth, that would be a different issue. I'm not saying we shouldn't address it, but can we, can we deal with the matter before us before we maybe address or understand some of these other issues? So I guess I would like to answer the first question. Do we approve the arts and do we approve the location? Let's have some comments in that vein.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of comments in that vein. One is that I think the art itself is amazing. It's very representative. It's going to be a wonderfully interactive sculpture. I do have issues with the location proposal. There are several reasons for my displeasure with putting it in front of City Hall. One of the first things is going through the the list of reasons why it should be in front of City Hall doesn't make sense to me. I think that a more appropriate location would be at the Arboretum. That was a place that actually burned in the fire. It wasn't, it wasn't destroyed, but it was burned. It's also very visible from Via Appia, from all of the lots of the homes that were burned on the hill to the north of the Arboretum. They all have an amazing view of the Arboretum and would, I think, be emotionally very supportive of being able to see that from their home. Accessibility to the sculpture. There is a parking lot in front of the Arboretum, so there is no parking issue getting to go and visit the sculpture if it's at the Arboretum. Traffic patterns or traffic volume is much higher on Via Appia and McCaslin than it is on Main Street. So more people would see it, and there would be more opportunities. And it would also be a safer place for the kids. It says opportunities for kids and families to interact, much safer at the Arboretum than on Main Street in front of City Hall with traffic right in front of you. The other issue that I have with it being placed in front of City Hall is that this isn't just an art sculpture. It's not just an art installation. It's being told, we're being told that it's a memorial to the fire victims or to the fire of the fire, however you want to word it. But if you look around the city, there is no other memorial for anything that isn't placed where the activity occurred. So you go, you want to see the memorial for the police officer, it's at the police station. You want to see the Monarch Mine Explosion, that's over in Superior because that's where the mine was. That's where the explosion took place. That's where Jeremiah is still buried. The Acme Mine is acknowledged down on, is it Roosevelt, I think, because that's where the entrance to the mine was, where at least 10 miners lost their lives. The Heckla Mine has a memorial there acknowledging, and it's at Heckla Lake, or very close by, because that's where the miners went on strike, and that's where the miners died. That's where it happened. So why are we putting a memorial for a fire where it didn't happen? I understand that everyone in the city had to evacuate. I had to evacuate. I didn't get to go back. And I think to compare the two experiences is rather offensive to the people who did lose their homes. And so I would like to see the sculpture. I love the sculpture. I would like to see it put at the Arboretum. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protam.
Can I follow?
Councilor Most?
I'm particularly interested in Mayor Protam's comments, again, because she is a fire victim, so she, you know, those of us who aren't, don't understand the experience and can't really, you know, we can be, we can be sympathetic. I think it's hard to be empathetic. So the question I have with Mayor Protam's comments is that when the call for entry was posted, right, it included direction that the sculpture would be an original piece of art that would be installed in the Louisville Historic Downtown, and the selection criteria had site-specific considerations, including that the sculpture needed to be compatible in style, scale, material form, and content with the historic downtown area. So I'm just wondering, right, if if we were to consider the Arboretum, which I think is actually, you know, given what you've said, I think it's actually a really great location. You know, I think the sculpture is beautiful, too, but I just wonder if scale and size at that location is different than scale and size in a little corner of the front of the City Hall. Because I could imagine, and I'm not an artist, whatever, that in a space like the Arboretum, you actually have something, you know, that's a little bit larger that has better relationship with that space might be appropriate. I don't know whether that's a larger version of this or just something to consider. Not, again, I I'm not an artist and I'm not, you know, I have no expertise in this area, but I'm just wondering if that's something that might be considered, because this was very specifically designed with specific site constraints in mind.
I think you're asking a good question. We do have staff and we do have members of the Cultural Council here, so we could let, I mean, can we ask staff to address that, and then you could direct us to members of the Cultural Council who might want to comment on that?
Thank you. Yes, this is correct, as as stated by Councilmember Most, that the call for entries, which is the artistic RFP, was neighborhood-specific to the historic downtown. So if the request is made to move the location outside of the historic downtown, per our understanding, we would have to go back, go back and post a new call for entries that reflects this and go through the public art process again.
Does that address your question? Councilor Lay?
Yes.
Excuse me. I'm sorry, Council Dickinson, you're up.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, Deb, I really appreciate your your comments and thanks for sharing that. I think, you know, I had a similar reaction to the concept of having the, you know, something related to the fire be in the downtown area. What I, how I see it is, I mean, first of all, the fire has covered an enormous area, right? So I mean, there are hundreds of places that we could put a memorial and 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 it would be in that fire area. And so I think there are lots of, lots of good options there. And I think the idea here being that it's, you know, it's being put in a prominent place that people will visit it and visitors to our community who are just in our, in our downtown area will will happen upon it. And so, you know, I I don't pretend to know or have a strong opinion about about the location. I feel like there's a process that, you know, maybe, maybe it's slaughter, maybe, you know, individuals like like yourself that may disagree with the with the outcome of of that group's decision. But again, I find it a little difficult for the six of us to say, hey, great process, but actually we don't like your location. And I think that's fair. That's why it's in front of us, right? We're approving the location in the end. So so certainly it's fair to be considering this. I, I think it will be a wonderful piece there, and I think it will be, you know, this is something, of course, that that happened to our city and to some of us more than others. I don't think the location is meant to say some sort of comparative of, it affected certain parts of the city more than others. I think it's just a prominent place in our I think it's just a prominent place in our city to, to have this art and have it be seen. And I, I don't think it means that, yeah, that, that I evacuated my home and thought I might lose it but didn't and I get, I get the statue. I definitely don't think that's the, the narrative that, that is intended. But, but I understand the feeling that you're having. I'm, I'm, I'm okay with, I, I love the sculpture. I, I'm glad I wasn't on the jury trying to judge art. That, that feels impossible. But I, I do love this, this sculpture and I'm okay with the location. It is not, I, I do want you to know, Deb, that, that there is also a pet memorial sculpture in, in process. And, and the current location has been suggested to be at the Arboretum. So there, there would potentially, again, that, that's a different process, different art, all unknowns. But that's, that's a potential piece of art that could be located there a, as well. So, so, you know, I think there'll be multiple, multiple pieces. And I know there's some, some other art that's being considered around this event. So, you know, hopefully we can figure something out. But that's, that's all my comments.
Thank you, Counselor, Counselor Brown.
Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate that. And I appreciate everything that's being said. Some of the questions about the process are concerning to me. I really appreciate the Mayor Protem's comments about, you know, when, when I was reviewing this, I, I had the impression that, you know, choosing a prominent place in front of the City Hall gave it a place of honor. But I think what the Mayor Protem has indi, has incredibly accurately indicated is that, you know, there is a, there's a sensitivity there. And, and we want to make sure that, you know, where things happen, there is an appropriate, an appropriate remembrance of, of the, of the events. So I'm not, I, I'm not comfortable at this point moving forward with this recommendation. I, I'm, I'm very comfortable with the sculpture, but I am not, I'm not comfortable with the, with the location at this point. So, thank you.
Counselor Lay?
I, I think we need to tease out some things because I, and the, the, Mayor, you raised this at the outset. One of the things that's very hard and I think it's, it's really important is that we do have a process we follow. I remember when we created this process, partly when we created the process because of controversy. Because frankly, even small pieces of public art can create big controversy. And art is controversial for a lot of reasons. It can be. It maybe that's part of the point or the impact or whatever. And you're probably never going to please everybody. And part of what we did is to create that process in a way that gave a lot of, I don't want to say autonomy. I would say appropriate, I thought it was appropriate and I think Council did because it passed it, leeway for input from the LCC, where we were placing people who had knowledge, experience, interest, devotion to public art. I think everybody on LCC is devoted to public art. They mean varying degrees, but I don't think there's anybody who says we shouldn't be supporting public art or we never would have put them there in the first place. But, and that's why we have this so that it gets approved if that process is followed and, and nobody objects. And here there was a, I guess, you know, it was pulled off of, of, and I, and we're, we're following the process right now. This is all good. We're all good. This is the way it's supposed to work. There's nothing that's gone wrong so far. And, you know, we can, and then that's, that's one issue. I think there's, there is, the points that Mayor Protem made were, you know, I, again, I have a hard time disagreeing or criticizing them. I think those are, they were all, you know, perfectly appropriately stated. And I'm wondering though, you know, this, this particular proposal was created in a certain way, the RFP. I don't think there's any question that that RFP was complied with and that there's any, any, I, I don't think it's ours to say at this point whether, whether that process worked in this case or not. But what I, what I do wonder is whether this is an either/or. Right?
Yeah.
Because what, what Counselmember Dickinson just said and pointed out, and I appreciate it because Louisville Rising is, is leading the charge on, on, on that animal or the pet memorial. And that's a whole separate issue. But there's, this is a big deal. I could see multiple ways in which we're going to commemorate this. Now, I'm not, I, and I don't want to minimize and I'm not disagreeing with you, Mayor Protem, on, on the comments. But I, I don't know that this is, I don't know that the question is, do we say, we approve the sculpture, but we want it moved? Because that's not what we really asked the LCC to do. That may be a good reason to say, you know, we just don't want to, we don't like it or we don't want to proceed with it. But I, I think it, for what it is, it, it's a great sculpture for downtown. Downtown is a good place to have a commemoration, I think, of the fire. But it's not the only one or maybe even the primary or most important one. I don't, and I would be very interested. It looks like we have, I want to, I would love to hear from those who lost their homes. And I think obviously Mayor Protem may have other comments and it looks like there's at least one fire survivor who's on the line, who's indicated a desire to speak. But that's what I would say. I, I, at least my current thinking, and I maybe, I could have my mind changed about this, is that the process was followed here, it appears. And we don't have to decide for all time whether this is the last memorial. And we may want to, we may want to have a really special memorial at, it, it strikes me a really good idea to have a very special memorial. I'm not knocking this one. But this one is, is different than maybe one that would go in the Arboretum. Anyway, those are my comments.
The $25,000 budget item for this, is this out of the LCC budget? Or is this a separate budget item that we have for public art?
Thank you, Counselmember Most. The LCC has several line items within the general fund. Public art is a separate line item from the, their other things.
And is that an annual, that's an annual?
It's annual, that's correct.
All right, was that it? Okay, I, I want to make a few comments. You know, like Counselor Lay, I was around when we created this policy and procedure and so forth. And I don't recall us ever actually pulling one off the agenda for any purpose. But, you know, this is, the Marshall Fire was an event. And it was an event that affected a lot of people. It affected all of us, some of us in more deep ways than others. And whatever we do, we need to do right. And I don't, I don't think we should do, think we're going to do something and we need to do something later. I think we need to do something that we feel is right. And, you know, Mayor Protem, Fahey, pointed out some things that I hadn't considered because I do believe this art does fit where the location was specified in the RFP. But now we're having this discussion about really where, where does it have a, a greater impact? Where does it belong? And the examples that Mayor Protem laid out were, you know, that was moving to me, that, it made a lot of sense. So, you know, this is the process. Us having the ability to do final approval is something that we maintained when we created this policy. And it's something that we should exercise if we don't believe this is exactly what we want. And like Counselor Lay, no one did anything wrong in this. But now when we're seeing what is being proposed and some of the broader discussion that we've had, I'm of the opinion that this is something I would like to, to see designed and proposed for a place at the Arboretum. I, I think that is in the middle of really the part of the city that was affected. You know, I was coming in tonight saying I'm willing, I, I'm ready to support what is being recommended and I appreciate what was recommended. But I think we can take it one step better. And that's, that's my opinion. Does anybody have a motion at this point in time? Counselor Brown, you have comments or a motion?
No, I, I think I have a motion. I think that I would like to, and I, I realize that we have a process here that we've tried, that we've followed. And so, you know, I will be open to friendly amendments to this motion. But I think that, given the sort of discomfort that some of us have about this particular proposal, I think I would like to send this back to the Cultural Council for consideration of alternative sites and potentially alternative designs that might be more in fitting with, with alternative sites and to come back with, you know, two to three additional recommendations that Council can consider.
I'll, I'll second for the purposes of.
Okay. Do you have other comments?
Well, I, I think I see that there's a hand up from the public. And I, as I said, I'm very interested at this point in hearing what the Mayor Protem has to say about all of this.
Well, due respect to the public, we're beyond a public comment at this point in time.
Okay.
So as a matter of procedure, this is.
Yeah, where we are.
A council discussion.
I, I think I'm, might, I don't know that this is, we're all kind of feeling around on this because it is such a huge issue. And it is a huge issue in the sense of what it's commemorating. And I'm, you know, I'm persuaded, I mean, I was persuaded of that when we, even before this. And I, I wonder whether, I wonder whether we table this, that, that one other alternative? And maybe, maybe I'll make that as a substitute motion. Table this particular proposal for now with the idea that I don't want this process to be for not because it may be something that would work. But the problem is that we have a suggestion that maybe, maybe our priority ought to be focusing on a different place or opening the RFP or an RFP to the whole, you know, to a bigger or different area. Because this one was for downtown. And it may be fine for downtown. But maybe in respect to the Protem's comments, she said that she liked the sculpture. There may not be a need to kill the sculpture or the process or to cast dispersion on those who created all of that. But perhaps to just simply table it for now and maybe raise this in a slightly different form with, you know, a direction to the staff to, well, I would say to table it now with a discussion to follow and proposal to follow at some point in the future. But I'm interested in, you know, anyway, that's my, my motion is to table it. I would say indefinitely or to a date certain if we have to. I just don't, I guess I just don't want to, I don't want to, I don't want us to, to vote it down because it's consistent with the process that we've had. But I also think we have other things that we really ought to be focusing on, on public art regarding the fire first.
Counselor Most?
A question on budget, again, clarification. Is this the $25,000 allocated? Is that from the 2022 budget or the 2023 budget? It's the 2023 budget. Okay, did we have?
No, that's, that's, that's a, that's a carryover from 2022. For this year, the LCC has an additional $25,000 to put towards public art.
Okay. So I guess I, I like Counselmember Lay's suggestion in that this doesn't necessarily have to be an either/or. It could be a both and. And especially if we have carryover budget from 2023 to and we have, and we have additional budget from 2023, that gives us some flexibility, I think, to consider this. Because I agree, I think it's a beautiful sculpture and I think it is totally site-appropriate for City Hall. So that, that would be my recommendation as well because I think we have some flexibility.
Counselor Brown, and then I want to address a question to the City Manager.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. I, I just want to make sure that my, I'm clear on the steps of the RFP and what happened. So during our process, is it, how is the, it, it sounds like the site is selected first and then the, and then the, there's a design related to the site? Is that correct? Or is that the way this worked this time?
That, that is correct. And for previous pieces of art, such as the works in Community Park, those started with a site as well. So.
So, thank you very much. So the, so the, the site was selected by the Cultural Council in this case? Or who?
By the Cultural Council's Public Arts Subcommittee.
Okay. And, and they, and they went through their process of engaging with the public in whatever the way that they did in, in order to select the site? And then went out for RFP and said, please design something for this site? Is that correct? No, they just, they just sort of talked about it amongst themselves and then decided.
Yeah, the site was included within the, the full text of the RFP, you know, including the budget, the description of what they were envisioning for the city. And then the RFP went out with that.
Thank you, thank you for clarification. I'm just trying to figure out how the site was selected and in what order things happened. It sounds like the site was selected by the Cultural Council, the Subcommittee of the Cultural Council. The, that, that site was then included in the RFP. The RFP was then circulated and selected and. Okay, just so that I understand. So if there had been a different RFP or a different site had been selected, a different piece of art might have been chosen as you, as you indicated earlier. Okay, the only reason that I, I, it pains me to say the word table with this particular proposal. And I think that what Counselmember Lay and Counselmember Most, I think we're kind of saying similar things. My goal here is that we, we have some options and that we have an opportunity to engage with, you know, each other and, you know, recognizing that the public process was followed, recognizing that I don't really want to quote unquote, "kill" this particular sculpture because I do, I do like the sculpture, but that there are concerns about the location. I just want to, I want to understand sort of if there are other, other ideas that we should be considering as part of this process. And if, I don't know if the Cultural Council has decided how they're going to spend this year's money. But if the idea is we might have another memorial or another piece of art somewhere else that also relates to the Marshall Fire, understanding that context. Because I, I also think that Counselmember Dickinson's comments about, or and, and maybe Counselmember Lay as well, that, that, you know, having multiple, having different memorials in different places in Louisville might be, might be helpful. So I'm, I, I know, I know we're all trying to, to work through this together. So I, I don't think we're, I think we're, I think we're trying, I think we more or less agree, but we're. less agree, but we're, we're struggling with the process and how to, how to best approach this.
Counselor Dickinson, I see your hand up, but first I'm going to address the City Manager and then I'll, I'll get to you. So, City Manager, you can see us all supporting the concept. We respect the process that the LCC used. You know, our, our Mayor Protem pointed out some issues with location. And I, I think we all want to do something. We all support the efforts that have gone on. I'm a little remiss to want to create the solution from the dais. So I'm asking you as the City Manager, can you take this back based upon the discussions you've heard and come back with a different proposal for location like the Arboretum? And if it's the same sculpture, then that's an artist's discretion that we probably don't understand. And so I, I don't want to put myself in the position to say, well, it'll fit perfectly there because I like the sculpture, but that's not my area of expertise. So I would like to kick this back to you and see what your thought is because, you know, I, I think you've heard, you've heard the sentiment, but I don't think we're going to come up with the perfect solution up here.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I think that's a good suggestion. And, and we can come back with some different scenarios. I think we can potentially have a conversation with LCC and bring back a more well-rounded kind of, based upon your conversation about different locations and different memorials. Also, I want to clarify that you heard a couple of different answers to the budget question. Currently, we have $25,000 in the 23 budget, but what we haven't yet done is the carry forward process. So carry forward, assuming you would do this, carry forward the $25,000 from '22 into '23, which then could allow for potentially two, two works this year, potentially in addition to the Lewisville Rising as well. So I'd be happy to sit down with staff and some members of LCC or LCC as a whole to work in bringing some, some alternative solutions back for your consideration.
Does that sound like a good idea? But first I want to go to Counselor Dickinson.
Well, I, I've spoken more recently than Deb if you want to give her an opportunity. I'm, I'm okay either way, Dennis.
Oh, well, thank you. Deb doesn't have a comment at this point in time?
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I guess, I guess my, to be blunt, I think, you know, my frustration, maybe it's a frustration in the process, but you know, if, so they put out an RFP, if you will, for this location, can someone come up with a concept for a piece of art at this location? And then we go for months and there's a jury and there's, you know, 16 artists that go through and they, you know, they, they work on a concept and they submit it and there's this whole process. And then when it gets to the end, we say, well, we don't like the location. So, well, then why did we do any of the process? It feels really disingenuous to all the people who participated in this event, from the artists to the judges to everything, to, to say, hey, we have an idea. And, and, and I will say that, you know, there's a miner statue out in front of the building right now. This wasn't the location of a mine. It is, you know, a, a prominent location in our city. And so this is, what I heard, what I saw was, there's a, there's an idea to have a statue, a, a statue at City Hall around the fire. And now artists, please come up with a concept for what you would put in this space. And so we needed to have weighed in a long time ago, but that doesn't seem like it's part of the process. That's part of my frustration too, is like, you know, how much, how much authority are we giving the Cultural Council to do things like this? And, and I imagine if I were a member of the Cultural Council, this would be frustrating to get this far into the process and then say, oh, you don't even like the concept in the beginning. We should have never taken a step in this direction if the location was the problem. And so again, you know, I, I think that this as a standalone art is fine for me, that this was conceived as something to exist at City Hall. And there are other projects. So again, you know, do we want two, three, four pieces of art at the Arboretum? Or one? Or two? You know, like, so if we, if we turn this down or turn it back and we say, hey, start over and we're going to do a new RFP for art specific for the Arboretum, well now this project is probably, from a calendar perspective, going to fall behind projects that are already coming for that space. And so then it's going to, well, is that, is that the right space? And now we're having this whole conversation with, with the Cultural Council. I just, I feel like this is a moment where we, we have this, this committee whose job it is, is to do public art and they've gone through this process. And I think it's a beautiful piece of public art in a very important, prominent place in our city. And I'm 100% in support of this particular piece of art. And I, I don't think, I just don't know how we take a step backwards without having to take the step all the way back to the beginning of this process for this particular call for art. So, yeah, I, I'm, I'm in support of, of this, of this moving forward. But obviously, there are six of us, so I'll, I'll be happy to, to support wherever we go as a group.
Thank you. Counselor Lay?
This is a Gordian knot. I don't think there's, I'm not sure there's, what you said, Mayor, is true, that I, we're, we're trying to make policy from the dais. And we're trying to make policy on something that's coming to us because of a policy we created from people who went through a process that we created. And in good faith, I don't think anybody is suggesting otherwise. I, I hear that, one of the things that's kind of an undertone, to be honest, that I'm hearing, is that maybe this is just too much to put on one committee. I mean, there are other, if we're talking about, if we're talking about the Arboretum, that probably P-Lab ought to be involved in that. The, but, but more fundamentally, maybe this is an issue that fire victims ought to have a lot more say-so over. I mean, it's, it's a question, one of the things that's hard about this is this came forward, a smaller group, we're entrusted with following the process, they did what they did. I, I don't, notwithstanding some suggestions that haven't been really fleshed out, I don't hear anything wrong with that process. What we have is just something that may be incomplete, it may be part of the solution. And we don't, I, I think what, what I'm concerned about, there's an institutional concern, the fundamental concern that I have is we need to respect the fire victims. We need to include them and we need to reflect in whatever we do on public art, some involvement by fire victim. We did some of that, as I understand it, from the process. Did we do it well enough? I don't know whether we do, but I can say from my, the comments of the Mayor Protem that we didn't do enough and that the process was insufficient, even if it was a correct and accurate and it just was maybe, it's bigger than that. Okay? So from the fire victim's standpoint, at least, I, I'm, I'm willing to say, we haven't done enough. We haven't done enough. But from an institutional standpoint, I think here's, here's where I'm trying to separate these out, is counsel has been accused, and maybe rightly so, of not valuing the time, effort, talents, input of its commissions and boards. And, you know, voting something like this down merely because we think it's incomplete, I think sends, you know, sends a certain message that somehow this is insufficient, that they didn't do the right thing. And I don't really want to send that message. That's why I'm suggesting tabling it and trying to bring it, you know, with, maybe that it is the direction to come back with a more inclusive suggestion about what the city's public art in commemoration of the fire and the survivors and the losses ought to be. And that's, that's, that's why I was suggesting tabling it. I haven't gotten a second, so I'm willing to withdraw my motion because I, there hasn't been a word of second to it. So, but that's what my intention is. We're struggling here. Frankly, I think we're traumatizing fire victims and I feel really bad about that right So I, I think we need to bring this to conclusion one way or another.
I, I think we do too. Yes.
I'd, I'd just like to make one comment, and that is that you're talking about the process and how it went through the Cultural Council's approval for the location and the sculpture and the proposal and all. But what I've heard from other people is that that did not go through approval of the entire Cultural Council, only of the Subcommittee. And the Cultural Council as a whole was not given the minutes of that discussion.
So I, I will, I will second to tabling with the, with the idea that we send it back to the City Manager to try to work through the details of this. I, I don't know what that means. I don't think, I don't, I didn't, I didn't hear a motion on the dais saying we should take these exact steps, but, you know, we're looking for help with the staff and with the Cultural Council.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to do that. We're happy to do that. And, you know, this is, one of, one of the challenges, this isn't just a work of art, this is a lot more than that. And so the process has worked so well in the past, you know, that, that is crossing paths, I think, with something that's a lot bigger in terms of how we honor this tragic, traumatic event that happened. So I think that's part of what we need to kind of take a step or two back from and think, rethink a little bit too, so.
All right. Thank you. Counselor Brown?
Yeah, thanks. I'm, I'm happy to support this direction that you all are circling around. I think that to the, you know, the city, I, I, I have faith that the City Manager will come, will work out a public engagement process, will come back to us with, with options. And I also, I think it's important to recognize that having a public art process may be a very different thing in, in, in many ways than having a memorial to something that may be, is probably the single most impactful event in our community's history. And that may require some special considerations, some special process and, and a special engagement with those who were particularly impacted and lost their homes. So I recognize that I don't, I hope that staff doesn't take any of this to indicate, or the Cultural Council for that matter, to indicate that necessarily the process was not followed. But I do think that this is a, a very special case and that I would, and I appreciate the willingness of the City Manager and others to, to come back with different options. Thank you.
Are we prepared to vote? Did you have a comment, Counselor Lay?
I was, I'm waiting with bated breaths of what you're going to say next.
I'm going to, I'm going to call for a vote next.
And we're voting on Counselor Member Brown's motion.
We're, we're making, we're-
Okay.
We're, we're, we made a motion to table this, to send this back to the City Manager and staff, to work with the Cultural Council and come back with at least an option or options. I, I think you've heard our intent. I, I think we all, you know, I, this to me is different than art that's in, you know, the parks that, that have gone through before. This is, this means much more. So that's what the motion is.
Second.
Do we need a roll call on this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so we have a five one. We'll move ahead with that. If you need any other information, just let me know, City Manager. Thank you. All right, so next item on the agenda is the City Council Committee Assignments.
A pen, yes.
So everybody got their pen? I'm going to read them really fast. This is one of those fun things we do every two years, but in this case, we're doing it every year. So for the City Council Economic Vitality Committee, Counselor Lay will be the Chair and Counselors Most and Fahy will be on that committee. The City Council Finance Committee, the Chair will be Counselor Dickinson with Counselors Brown and Lay. The Colorado Communities for Climate Action, CC4CA, will be Count, Mayor Protem, excuse me, I'm getting used to this, Fahy. Commuting Solutions will be Mayor Protem Fahy with Counselor Most as the alternate. Consortium of Cities will be Counselor Brown with Counselor Dickinson as the alternate. The DBA will be the Mayor. The Denver Regional Council of Governments will be Counselor Brown with Mayor Protem Fahy, got to write that time, as the alternate. Joint Issues Committee with Superior and Lafayette will be Counselor Most and Counselor Brown. Revitalization Committee will be Counselor Lay. And the RMM Roundtable, which is the Airport Noise Issue, will be Counselor Brown, who I believe was elected as the-
Vice Chair.
Vice Chair, congratulations, with Counselor Most as the alternate.
I will email this to you all so you can stop writing furiously.
You know, I actually told them they had to do this, so you should have played along with me. All right, so the next-
Can I just ask a quick question?
Yes.
Mayor, I'm interested in, I assume that when we appoint the new Council Member from Ward Three, that we will have to find a place for that person-
Yes, we will.
-in this scenario.
Yes, we will.
Okay. And you, okay, great. We'll deal with that.
And I, and I haven't figured that out yet.
Okay, great. Thanks.
That's, that's a good question. City Attorney's report.
I have no report this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Council Comments, Committee Reports and Identification of Future Agenda Items. Counselor, Mayor Protem Fahy.
Thank you. I have a report from the Commuting Solutions meeting. They had their annual legislative breakfast, had speakers Joan Nagus, Michael Bennett, Governor Polis, J.J. Arnett, other important business owners. And Governor Polis spoke about the importance of linking future planning between transit and housing and the importance of working together to mitigate housing costs by creating more housing units and focusing transit on the places that are densely populated. And Senator Faith Winter discussed the importance of developing air quality, transit system needs, housing affordability, climate. And so we do have people at all levels of the state government that are working on the same issues that we're working on, mainly housing and climate transportation issues. So, good news.
Thank you for the report. others? Counselor Brown?
I'll just mention, since you mentioned it, that on Monday, I was elected Vice Chair of the Community Noise Roundtable, and I'm looking forward to continuing our work on that, in that group. I will say, I'm also delighted to say that Commissioner Stoltzman will be joining us, joining me as a member of that roundtable. And I expect her to be a, a strong ally in the work that we're doing there. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Brown. Anybody else? Seeing no other comments, we're adjourned.